Good.
That's it.
Ready, Becky.
Okay. It is eleven o'clock. We'll start our commission meeting. We're here in the commission chambers. It is October thirty first, twenty twenty-two. Happy Halloween to everyone. It's eleven A.M. Um, we'll start this commission meeting if everybody would shut your cell phones off or put them on silent. We will start out today with, uh, Alicia Colthorpe giving the opening prayer and Barbara Sempra doing the pledge allegiance.
Dear Holy Father, we are very grateful to be able to gather here together today as a community. We ask you to please do with us as decisions are made that will be best for our community. We are grateful for those that protect our rights and our freedoms and ask you to please do with them that they're watchful and protected. Please do with our local first responders that they will be watchful and protected and safe as well. We're grateful for the community that we have to live in and for all those that make it a great place to be and save these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate that. And just a reminder that we will not have meeting next week on the seventh. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two minute.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next item would be report of warrants, review of countersignatures, certified list of claims.
Good morning, Commissioners. Warrants from October twenty-eighth in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-seven thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and sixteen cents. Only one on here that was really out of the normal is we paid, we paid relic agency thirty-two thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, the rest of them were pretty much the normal bills on there. We do have one claim this time. It's check number three-eight-two-seven-five-nine to Western States and Tribal Nations for five-thousand dollars. This is a contribution or a membership that you pay to them that we've paid for several years. Half of it's paid by your budget or by forty general miscellaneous and half by the Economic Development Director budget. So just where there's no purchase or there's no written agreement or anything, I felt that should come in as a, as a claim. Also, Commissioners, these are still not created, modified, or deleted in my office.
Okay. Um, I thought we had that handled.
You know, we looked at that again Friday was we was trying to do these checks. There is. You've written a program, but we cannot create. I cannot change a vendor. I cannot change entries that are put in there. All I can do is accept or delete it. So just. That's my disclosure on that was we are not creating these entries or deleting them or modifying. We can delete them and prevent it from being made, but that's it.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move, um, to approve the authorization of signature of the certified list of claim as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Cemetery certificates.
We have one today, Commissioners, Vernal Memorial Park, Diane Morton, Lot two fifteen, spaces one through four, and Lot two twenty-two, space eight. And that's it.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve the cemetery certificates as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Tax matters. Wendy?
Commissioners, I have one tax matter today to bring to you. The serial number is zero-five-zero-three-two-zero-zero-six-five. This serial number was inadvertently deleted, um, and it just simply needs to be put on, back on the tax roll. The amount is five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and sixty cents. We just barely sent out the tax notices, so this notice will go out in a timely manner and they will have time to pay it before the deadline.
That was five-eighteen-sixty?
Five-eighteen-sixty, yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, let me just ask, Wendy, is it authorization to modify something pulls? What exactly are we?
I would just say to approve the adjustment.
Okay.
On the tax roll.
Mister Chairman, I move to approve the adjustment of, um, removing the, inadvertently removing the serial number, um, from the tax roll, putting it back in the amount of five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and sixty cents as presented by Wendy.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other tax matters today? Mike? Okay, business licenses? None today. Okay, I need a motion to recess into the M.B.A.
Mister Chairman, I'd make the motion that we recess into the M.B.A. this time.
Okay, have a motion.
And second.
And second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mister Chair of the M.B.A., I'll turn the time over to you.
At this time, I'd like the discussions and, and look at, uh, maybe a, um, motion to, uh, the transfer of lease for recreational center building from the Recreation S.S.D. to S.S.D. one. And entertain any.
Mister Chair, can I take that for just a minute just to, uh, put a little meat around this agenda item? So, uh, the lease, as Commissioners, you may know, um, the, the M.B.A. actually owns the building and has the financing for the recreation building. Uh, back in two thousand eight, uh, the Rec District entered into a sublease with the M.B.A., uh, to take care of some, the, essentially to make those payments, to, to lease it and to use it, and then it take, it covers the payment for the, for the loans. Back in two thousand eight, the sublease base rental payment was a hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars plus, um, additional rental payment for deposit and reserve fund of twenty-seven-thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. In twenty-fourteen, that amount was reduced because the sublease additional rental payment was taken off, and so it returned back to the sublease base rental payment of a hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars annual. That runs through twenty-thirty-seven unless obviously there's a, but a change in the, in the financing, but that's the schedule that's in the sublease agreement. Um, it's, it's proposed now that we have Special Service District Number One, and, um, we'll be dissolving the Rec District here in the next, uh, number of weeks before the end of the year, that we need to get this sublease, uh, transferred over to, uh, Special Service District Number One so that they can continue all the obligations under the, under the sublease. So that's what's before the M.B.A. today, if they would accept that transfer of the lease from Recreation S.S.D. to S.S.D. Number One. And then it's proposed to be on the agenda for S.S.D. Number One, I think, two Wednesdays from now.
Sixteenth, yes.
Is when they will have that on their agenda.
Okay.
Miss? Any, any questions? Comment?
No. Mister Chair, I'd make motion, um, to transfer the lease from the Recreation, of the Recreation Center Building from the Recreation S.S.D. to the S.S.D. one.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. At this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn of the M.B.A. and reconvene in commission meeting, I guess. That's correctly how we do that?
Is that any make a motion?
Yeah, I just called for a motion.
All for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move to, um, uh, recess from or.
Adjourn.
Adjourn from the, uh, M.B.A. and return to open session.
Have a motion.
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay. We're back into regular session. Uh, next item on the agenda is review, consideration, and adoption of the twenty-twenty-three tentative budget.
Commissioners, first of all, this is not the public hearing. It'll have to be held later, just so you were. In the code, it says I give you a tentative budget, which you have had actually since September, but I have done a revised tentative budget after meeting with the departments. Myself, Caleb, and Mark Caldwell and the H.R. Director and members of the public participated in several, in all those meetings. Different ones were there at different times. We were able to reduce the requested budgets from the departments that participated and voluntarily agreed to reduce their budgets from their requested, so that is in the tentative column. I want to also give credit to Caleb. He's put a lot of hours in this budget also. But due to not having the governing body there, we lack the authority to do any other major cuts that needed to be done or could be done. So with that, from the requested budgets have been, uh, we still have increased expenses that were requested from the department heads. Uh, the requested expenses haven't been able to be discussed with the Commissioners, so there we, here's where we're at now. Because of the increased expenses, shortfalls in each fund have been balanced with fund balance or from general fund transfer to cover the expenses. Uh, Tanya Craven provided to us from the H.R. a twenty-twenty-three compensation proposal for market increase for employee wages for U.N.A. County. There was also a proposal from H.R. that all employees receive a cost of living of eight-point-seven percent for all employees, and I put it in there also for elected officials, and other market increases have been implemented. This COLA increase is based on the twenty-twenty-three COLA increase of eight-point-seven percent that Social Security granted. Currently not included in this budget was a proposal that the sheriff turned in in the last minutes of the day on Friday of one-point-three million plus dollars for a salary adjustment for the Sheriff Department. So that is not included in this budget. It was already done and printed at the time that he presented that. Uh, so we have implemented the market increases from Human Resources and the staffing plan, and you'll see them in your staffing plan as an H.R. market adjustment or the COLA as a H.R. COLA, eight-point-seven percent. Overall, this budget is balanced at this time. Overall, the total budget for U.N.A. County tentative budget, I do not expect you to balance to accept this budget. I expect some additional work to be done on this with the Finance Director in my office is currently looking at sixty-three million, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So with that, Commissioners, uh, I would like to confirm what day we want to do the public hearing so that I can get that advertised. Originally, you'd give me that week of Thanksgiving. It works better for me the next week, but if that's the week you want to do it, we'll make that one work. But this budget is back there for the public. If anyone did not receive it, you're welcome to get a copy of that, and if we run out, I will get you additional copies. This will be out for public review and discussion with the Commissioners.
And it needs to be out for ten days?
Ten days prior to the public hearing. That's why I was asking you, you know, what day works for you guys? If you want to do it that week of Thanksgiving, that's fine, or the next week is fine. That'd be the quickest we could do it is the week before Thanksgiving at this point.
And that would be the twenty-first?
I didn't bring my calendar up with me.
Yeah, that is the twenty-first. I will be gone, Mister Chairman, the twenty-eighth.
So if the twenty-first works.
We ought to do the twenty-first.
We can do the twenty-first.
He's the one that will be here, so.
Okay, so November twenty-first, I'll get that advertised.
That's what I would like.
For the public hearing.
That gives what, three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we need to, uh, a motion to just accept this.
To accept it, I probably would think.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move to accept, uh, let's see, we've got Hank's review, consideration, and adopt the twenty-twenty-three tentative budget as presented.
Second.
We good?
Just to avoid confusion, do we have, we don't want to adopt.
Yeah, that's why I wouldn't adopt. I would just more or less accept.
Accept and then review.
Because adopting will be in the December.
The next action item is to review this tentative budget.
Okay, so I'm, what I'm doing is looking at the agenda. It says adoption, but.
That is the way that Mister Caldwell requested it be put on there.
Acceptance, okay.
I just don't, I.
Yeah, we're not adopting, we're just.
Issue, I just don't want there to be any confusion with.
Correct.
I withdraw that motion and replace with, uh, Mister Chairman, I move to, uh, accept the twenty-twenty-three tentative budget as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, Matt, notice of non-compliant buildings.
Okay, good morning. Matt Kazir, Community Development Office, um, or Department, I guess. Uh, the, I've got two on, on the agenda today. Um, the first one, and on both of these, we're requesting authorization to record a certificate of non-compliance on the property. Uh, so the first one is located at seventeen-sixty-two North, fifteen-hundred East, and it's serial number five-one-fifteen-thirty-one. Uh, this is an accessory building that's, um, under construction on this parcel. Um, the owner was notified, um, with a, a posting on the property, letting him know that the, uh, building required a permit. Um, it's, it's larger than the two-hundred square feet, and the property, uh, is smaller than the required size for an agricultural building exemption that the state offers, so, um, the, one of, the, the property owner has been into our office, uh, twice and talked with, with, uh, with Aaron Eaton from our office. He was offered an application both times and did not take the application. Um, I believe he also came in and talked with Commissioner Stringer, uh, a week ago Friday, I believe, on that one, so, um, at this point, um, th- those are the different communications we've had with them. Uh, a permit is required for the building at, at this stage, um, and so we would request that a certificate of non-compliance be recorded on the property.
Immediately or?
Um, yes, that would be my recommendation immediately, since we don't have, he has been in to talk with us but hasn't taken the application, uh, to try and remedy the situation.
Hey, Rick. I.T. can't even run the phone. All right. Let's go.
That's, that's what I've got on this.
What do you want? Do you want to make a motion?
Well, you need to call for a motion.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Rick ruined the whole train of thought there, Rick.
He did.
Like the ringtone though, Rick.
Can't turn it off.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, authorization to record a certificate of non-compliant building or structure on property located seventeen-sixty-two North, fifteen-hundred East, Vernal, Utah, serial number five-one-fifteen-and-thirty-one, uh, doing so immediately. Is that got us covered?
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay.
Okay, uh, the next one is located at forty-four-eighty-four South, fifteen-hundred East, uh, here in the Vernal area, serial number six-thirty-six-one-hundred. Uh, this is a fire damage property. The notice was placed on the property back in August of this year, and, um, the owners, um, oh, they at least haven't contacted us to let us know that anything's been done with the property. And so we did send them, we did send them a certified letter. They did receive it. But this one. The property's really in non-compliance until it's either removed or restored, um, back to a livable condition. Um, as part of this, uh, regardless of whether the non-compliant or the certificate of non-compliant building is recorded or not, they're going to have to, uh, secure the property. We don't want it left open for kids and people to be able to access the property easily, and so, um, there's several different ways they could secure the property. That, it could be with like a six-foot chain link type fence around the property, or they can go and seal off, uh, any broken windows and doors that don't function properly, uh, or any, I guess with fire damage, you can have holes in the structure as well, maybe from the fire, so, um, basically they just have to secure off any kind of entry, um, to the prop, to the building itself. So with that, since we haven't heard from them, um, we'd request that this be authorized to be recorded at this time as well.
Okay.
You do know they're receiving it though, because it sounds like they're not getting mail at their current address.
Yeah, so they did, they signed for the, um, certified letter that was sent.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move to approve authorization or authorize the filing of a, um, certificate of non-compliant, uh, structure on property located on parcel six-thirty-six-one-hundred as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I do have a, a question, if I might, Mister Chairman.
Go ahead.
It, Matt, typically, we, we, uh, we record on these so that lenders are aware and, and so if they don't, if they see that there's a risk there, that's an issue. This sounds like it's currently a safety issue. Is filing of a certificate of unauthorized structure sufficient, uh, should there be other action that needs to be taken?
Yeah, so well, uh, if they don't secure the property, then we may have to take other action, um, which would, uh, go through the attorney's office.
Okay.
At that point.
So I was hoping that wasn't the end of it, that, so.
Yeah, if there's safety things, uh, on any of these non-compliant, uh, structures, then we handle those through the attorney's office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item is a general plan amendment. Is that yours also, Matt?
Yeah, so, uh, Commissioners, your, if you remember last week, um, we had a, this listed as a discussion item. I went through the different changes that are, uh, part of this, uh, resolution, that are now part of this resolution, and then I believe, um, John Stermer, uh, had a couple of recommendations to add, um, to two different sections to that. I think it was sections or chapter six, uh, energy resources, and then chapter, uh, twenty-nine utility corridors, I believe. In that meeting, it was, I, I was told to add those to the, uh, document, so those were added to the document. And so I have for you today, Resolution ten-dash-thirty-one-dash-twenty-twenty-two R-one, and I've got a paper copy here. And I called down to clerk auditors, they needed a paper copy along with the resolution, and so I've got that here with the changes, and, um, if it's approved, we'll get it updated on our, our website and, as well, so that, uh, those different public land agencies would ha, will have access to it.
Okay. Any questions? Concerns? John? Entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'd, uh, make a motion to adopt the Resolution ten-thirty-one-twenty-twenty-two R-one, adopting the amendments to the U.N.A. County Resource Management Plan and in text and authorizing the implementation of the plan.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Motion passed. Okay, public comment today. Quinn, come talk about your mayor's walk real quick, would you? Never seen so many people.
So Quinn Benyon, City Manager of Vernal, um, first, it was very much a group effort. We, it wa, it was excellent. We had a committee of eighteen that helped put that together, including the six primary entities were County Tourism, Steve Evans Media, Vernal City, Naples City, Rec District, and sixth one. Oh, Chamber, Chamber, yes. So real, really good coordination. We tried to learn a lot from last year when we moved it downtown. Um, there was a lot of, um, flow issues, so we worked on that a lot, um, really worked on getting more businesses involved. We had almost, I think we hit, um, is in the nineties on the number of businesses. Would love to have a lot more, uh, but we did a quick count of one of the blocks and then times that out by, by four, and it ended up being a, we, we figure roughly six-thousand people came to that, so it was a awesome response and creative costumes and, for the most part, people were smiling and enjoying it and happy, but the lines were, were full. I think it stalled for a little bit there, and we're got to figure out a little bit better how to, with that many people, we just maybe stretch it out further, um, so the lines flow, get, get some more businesses involved, but it was, it was a great event, so thanks for being a part of that and, and everybody else that was, was included.
Thank you. It's good, thank you.
And your committee.
Mainly for the press. Commissioners, we've received about thirty-seven-hundred, we got another three-hundred-and-fifty, so we're about four-thousand ballots. I sent out eighteen-thousand ballots. I'm hoping for all eighteen-thousand of them back, but I'd shoot for about thirteen-thousand of them back. That'd get us about a seventy percent return. Please don't wait till the last day to send your ballots in. Please get it done and get it in the mail and let's get this process going, and I appreciate you giving us Monday because it's been crazy today. Thank you. Thank you.
I voted four times, so.
Any other public comment today? Do I want? Okay, close the public comment. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Or adjourned.
Well, you're still at least sixteen minutes shorter than my fastest one.
You wait.
Longer. Public comment, I'll never get her done.
I'll take it off that week.
Definitely go get her done. A regular Monday meeting. Too much this time of year, too many missed.
It'll be done. It'll be done. What was the fastest? Hey, Margie, could you look and see what the fastest commission meeting, the short? It wasn't today.
Oh, I did one in fourteen minutes.
He definitely says, but.
You don't need to leave it up. You can just go off of that.
Look up the shortest one, would you? Because we're going to beat that here. Sure.